Tuesday, May 16th, regular work session meeting. I have asked, who did I ask? I asked Commissioner Swett to do our invitation and Commissioner Clark to lead us in our pledge. If you would join us, please by standing.
Board, we pray that you would enlighten our mind, heart, and spirit as we spend these moments together. Amen.
Amen. Do you want to place the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, I've had a request to move item number six up to the number two spot. Can I get a motion to approve that?
Mr. Chairman, motion to move number six to number two. Are we moving number two to number six?
No, we just started down the line after that.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Raffowski, a second by Commissioner Clark to amend our agenda to move item six up to number two. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. All right, first on our agenda today is National Police Week, and I would like at this time to read this proclamation. It is a proclamation to recognize National Police Week and the contributions as well as significant of the National Law Enforcement Memorial and Museum, whereas in 1962 President John F. Kennedy designated May 15th each year as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as Police Week. This year, Police Week is being recognized from Sunday, May 14th to Saturday, May 20th, and whereas the National Law Enforcement Memorial and Museum will hold ceremonies, including the 35th Annual Candlelight Vigil to honor the fallen officers whose names have been recently, have recently been added to the memorial, and whereas National Police Week serves as a time to honor the fallen officers whose names have recently been added to the memorial, and is a collaborative effort of many organizations dedicated to honoring America's law enforcement community, and whereas this year the names of 556 officers killed in the line of duty are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. These 556 officers include 224 officers who were killed in the line of duty during 2022, plus an additional 332 officers who have died in previous years. There are currently 23,785 names engraved on the memorial, and now therefore be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners that May 14th through 20, 2023 shall be recognized as National Police Week 2023, and the contributions of all law enforcement professionals be recognized for their service and their sacrifices. They have made on behalf of the citizens of Glen County, the state of Georgia, and the United States of America, witnessed today by my hand. I would like to, if we could, give all peace officers a round of applause for their service and dedication. All right, item number six that we've moved is discussion of a proposed Dunbar Creek kayak launch, a joint initiative of Georgia DNR and the county in partnership with Brunswick-Glen Joint Water and Sewer. Commissioner Fendig was called away today, so do we have anyone speaking? I know we have, looks like Mr. Gentry is front and center. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioners, John Gentry, Assistant County Manager, so I'll just throw on my tap shoes for Commissioner Fendig. Basically, we're bringing at your request, kind of more of a, in this working arraignment, an opportunity to introduce a project Commissioner Fendig has initiated in conjunction with DNR and partnered also with our Joint Water and Sewer Commission, and is developing a kayak launch at Dunbar Creek. The benefit of this kayak launch that simultaneously, one is going at the natural park, also they're going to be putting in a kayak launch in recovery, so can kind of go between the two as part of a blue way plan within the community. So it's just a good opportunity to, for us at this point in time to bring it to you. There's some nuances of this, obviously a three-way partnership is going to require an MOU with the DNR as well as Joint Water and Sewer. There's also another component, potential lease of property on Joint Water and Sewer that we've got to work through, so we're not bringing this to a vote at your next meeting just yet. We wanted to be able to bring the project to you so we could discuss it, give you an opportunity to ask questions to the team. So I'll ask Elliot to just come up and talk a little bit about the MOU, and I've got Jason here as well to talk some engineering aspect of it as well, so we'll stand by for questions. And Aaron?
I can take care of the board, just to save a trip up there. So Commissioners, there were a series of MOUs or agreements between DNR. DNR tenderly has indicated to us that they will pay up to $25,000 for the engineering services, and then the cost of the actual ramp, so those will be, you know, a couple, one or more agreements with them. If the board desires to go forward, then that's what we put together. Then the Water and Sewer Commission has land that is necessary, that we would need to lease from them. We've had some preliminary talks with them or with their council. There seems to be, you know, general, I guess, amenable, they're amenable to letting us do it, probably another agreement we'll have to work out with them, but that's, that's really it. And then again, with the board's blessing to move forward, we'll get those things moving forward and completed and brought to y'all at our future meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mo. We've talked about cost sharing, and DNR, is there someone from DNR that's here to speak today? Yes, sir.
We do this with the county all the time. Paul Meders over at George DNR.
Thank you.
On behalf of our director, I'm honored to be here and thank y'all for the work that y'all do. So we do this with counties all up and down the coast. We spend state tax dollars, or state dollars that are generated when you buy a fishing license, and money when you buy fishing tackle, there's an excise tax, we're required to spend that on public access, and we consider these paddling access trails, public access. If I lived on St. Simons and I was a boater, I'd be crying for more public access right now because there's very little public access on St. Simons. This is an attempt to satisfy those paddle sports people. We are willing to sponsor the park that's in the water, and we will, as funds are available, if something happens after a hurricane, or we'll send somebody by twice a year to inspect it to make sure everything's okay, and the county calls and says there's a problem, we'll do what we can to take care of it. We do this all up and down the coast, in the five coastal counties in the saltwater, and we have counter parks that do it in the freshwater side too. So it's just something that, where we partner with counties and local municipalities, and we're happy to do it, and we think it's good for the citizens of Georgia.
Thank you. Commissioners, any question for Mr. Meders? All right, and...
Did you say, excuse me, did you say you guys do the part in the water?
Volume minimum.
Does the part in the water and the dock on the land?
That, well, that's kind of the agreement we have with the county, that the county's going to handle the parking lot, and we'll do the dock access and the gangway going down of the dock and the water. That's, we do that oftentimes, it's not always that way, sometimes we carry more of the load or less of the loads, it's really up to each individual project.
Okay.
But that's what, that's what we're committed to, and we would, we would help design, and we're also, said we help with the permitting process because we have to get a permit from our own agency, and we have to get one from the Corps of Engineers, and so we like to help with that and save the county a little bit of money there, I think, so.
Good, thank you. All right, so then the land cost side of it, we know we'll have an MOU with Joint Water and Sewer.
Yes, sir, so what we're looking at, that's the beauty of this partnership, is the launch site is actually on Joint Water and Sewer property, so the agreement would be some type of lease back program. We would construct the parking area, DNR is basically paying for the downstream, in the water, construction costs, and then we'll maintain it from there. And so right now, we've got an initial engineering cost, and Jason is here to just talk a little bit about that. The one thing that we've talked about, we got, receiving initial costs from EMC to do the engineering work that's required. Paul has obviously offered to take care of a lot of the permitting side of things, so that lowers that cost. So we're going to go back to EMC, kind of negotiate some, a price reduction based on services that we can do, Paul can do, have a revised estimate at that point in time so that we can move forward on the engineering side of things. And then at that point in time, we'll, we should be able to have everything wrapped up. We need the Joint Water and Sewer to do their part and to approve more or less us leasing the property back. We'll also be able to bring the MOU back to you. We anticipate that first of June timeframe, where we'll have everything kind of wrapped up and brought to you for final approval.
John, is the engineering for the dock and all, or is it just the parking lot?
Primarily the parking lot, so one thing Paul will help us with is the permitting side in the water. Now there is, we've got a third party, you want to talk to the surveying piece out there? You can talk to that part, I'm not...
Yeah, one way we can, Jason Hartman, Engineering Division Manager, Public Works, good afternoon. We got initial EMC proposal from EMC about this project, and this would encompass the parking lot design and the boat launch design as one. That was before we talked with Paul, had meetings with them on the cost sharing and what we could and couldn't do. So basically what I'm going to do is go back to EMC, kind of tell them what we're trying to accomplish more and get this proposal more catered to what we're trying to accomplish. But yeah, it would be, to talk to John's comment, we have a surveying team here at the county, we can do the surveying of like the parking lot internally and save some money there. But... We can do the surveying of like the parking lot internally and save some money there. But there is a special hydro survey that's required in the waterway. I would probably recommend that EMC carry that out, but we could cut off half the cost of surveying because of us doing it in-house for just a land survey to do the parking lot on that JWSC property. And there's other things, like Paul was saying, that there's other permits that are required that initially EMC thought they would have to get on our behalf. Paul is looking to try to help us with that cost sharing wise and that could possibly be eliminated from the proposal. So I think we just need to get, we wanted to present this to you and follow back up with EMC, get an updated proposal and see.
I think my question is, was an RFP done with the engineering or we just go to EMC?
Well, we were hoping that this, their initial cost came in at around $65,000, but by looking at things that we can potentially take out, I think the rule is if it's under $50,000, then we can, you know, reach out to one firm in particular. They've done, when we talked, Paul and I met with Kat Fendig at the beginning of the year with Dave Austin and EMC has done a lot of work for DNR with these type of projects. So that's why EMC came to mind. We weren't sure that their cost was going to be over the $50,000 when we presented this to them, but we're looking at ways to cut this out to allow this to go under the $50,000 so we can proceed with EMC.
Oh yes, my next question is, how much does a parking lot going to cost?
You mean for the construction of it itself?
Right.
That would have to be, we would have to get the design, kind of like what we've done on that Altima Hall Park, we'd have to kind of see what the design comes out as and get them to give us an estimate for the.
So we're putting in more than parking spaces?
What's that?
We're putting in more than an asphalt pad?
There's, it's just, we have an exhibit that we show on that property that's been presented. It's got like a little cul-de-sac type thing. Does anybody?
Commissioner Fendig, the only one that's seen that exhibit?
Yeah, I think we'll be happy to, I think maybe we should share that with you guys. And I don't have a copy of that right now with me, but we can definitely follow up and show the proposal, what it's going to look like. But yeah, it's a pretty standard parking lot, just to get to the access and allow to, the main use would be for the kayak, but you also need parking there as you're having. We did a similar project earlier this year, the DNR led that project, the South Harrington Boat Ramp. And then eventually we're trying to pave that area to kind of, and that's a separate project. So this would be, the way Paul and I view this is a similar project to that, to where they've done the boat.
Can I address one comment? I think you asked about engineer drawings and just keep in mind that because this is going into navigable waterways, the marsh protection laws apply and the US Army Corps of Engineer laws apply and they require professional drawings, they require engineer drawings. Years ago, we would do it out on eight and a half by 11 and show what it's going to be and that was it. Those days are gone. So this engineer drawings is very standard, what we do when we build a boat ramp, they have to be drawn out to show exactly what the shape is going to be, where it's going to be. And then the marsh laws in particular have an upland component, so it brings the parking lot into the regulatory mix for the Marsh and Shore Committee. So both of those things are addressed at the same time. I think that may be, other than cost, may direct. Answer your question a little better. Yeah.
Thank you.
Jason, is there a fence involved moving around the Joint Water and Sewer?
I believe there was. I feel like Dave Austin met on site with JWSC on this. I think there is a, I don't want to quote myself on that, but I think there was a fence on that drawing that showed, is that a parody?
Fairly lengthy fence, or do we know?
I think the drawing would present a lot, I apologize for not having that drawing with the interview and present that, but we do have an attachment that's been discussed in different aspects.
And we took that up at JWSC and there's a fence relocation.
I think Joint Water and Sewer's fenced in, that area they owns behind it, and I'm not sure it has a fence. It's just that they own it.
I understand, I had thought that the parking lot was going to be, you know, oyster shell or something like that, except for the handicap parking. Is that not how you understand that?
I thought it was going to remain pervious, except for the required parking for.
From what I recall, it was going to be a paved parking lot.
All right. I'm not saying I'm accurate, I'm just saying how.
I thought the original conversation was just.
That's how I thought it came to the JWSC. But, and then the other thing, we have to have a bathhouse there, right? Restroom, not a bathhouse, but a restroom.
The only thing I saw in that drawing was there was like a gazebo, I can't remember if the gazebo was existing or what, but I don't recall, you know, needing, it was just parking and the boat launch is what I've seen on the drawings.
Like South Harrington does not, and there was a portage on there where we were doing it and people really enjoyed having it there, I'm sure, but there's not normally one there in that location.
Well, let's say, I'm not certain of the facts, but I had thought that was part of discussions that I heard.
And I think DNR would be agreeable to, the permitting people would like pervious paving being that close to the water, but I don't know, I was in on discussions where we discussed exactly what the paving would be yet, if that could be decided.
I think at the very beginning of the year, we met with you guys on this project in January, and I think that was discussed. Like I said, I'd have to look back at this proposal and see exactly if they've actually proposed that or not. They may evaluate that. And if that's our desire, then certainly the engineering company can try to accommodate those desires when they're designed for us.
So at this point in time, we don't have an estimate of what the county's participation in this project is going to be?
We have the initial cost and we had talked, I guess what Aaron had mentioned, what the DNR would, so we could give you a worst case cost, but I'm looking to reduce that cost down, so I don't really want to quote on that until we can get a better cost estimate and work with the engineer.
I would think, before we go to our next step, we're going to need some project projections on it.
Yes.
And also, I'd like to ask Ms. Muntz, is it in the budget? She's trying to finish, or the budget's finished, I guess.
Yes, this is not in the budget. When I spoke with Commissioner Fendig a few weeks ago, he mentioned this coming in a few years at a pretty significant cost. So nothing was put in the budget for FY24.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Hartman, is there, Mr. Gentry, anything else to add? Mr. Matters?
The only thing I would just add, without Commissioner Fendig, to kind of fill in some of the gaps with Mr. Austin retiring, so we're a little bit in a hole. We wanted to bring this to you just to get some, basically to let you know, we are in the process for the, the MOU is the most important thing before we can even move forward. Without your approval of the MOU, this project doesn't move forward. So there are some key things that we do need. Basically, your agreement, not necessarily approval, full approval yet, is an agreement to move forward to finalize the MOU. And then we'll bring that back to you. At that point in time, we should have some more firmer costs on what we anticipate will be the engineering costs. The part of the engineering costs will be also to help us derive what could be the estimated cost of the construction as well. So.
And I think for us to be able to make an informed decision, and I don't need to speak for the rest of the commission, but we need some scope of work and projected numbers.
Yes, sir. And that's the intent, is that we would bring this back to you for approval in the June timeframe for, with more details at that point in time.
If we do the MOU or if it comes in higher than what we say, will we be required to do it?
So there's two components. There's the construction component and then there's the engineering services component. And you'll need the engineering services to have a firm bid, but I think you'll, depending on how DNR wants that written up or what's agreeable to them, there probably will be a component where we're going to be responsible for the other half of the engineering services. They're going to pay up to $25,000 for engineering and then we're responsible for the remainder, which is going to be around $25,000, give or take. That part we would be responsible for. I think we probably want to leave a little bit of some optionality on there, options to not go through construction if you don't like the final bids. But we will, you know, from, depending on what the board says to us this afternoon, we will, or you know, proceed with developing those contracts, presenting them and bringing them back to y'all for a future vote. Or if y'all want us to hold off from doing that until, you know, you get some, I guess, soft estimates, if you will, from that, which I'll defer to the engineers on that. But we're ready to proceed or kind of hold off depending on what the board wants.
Are we not, we can't do engineering in-house on our side of it? Are we equipped with that type of expertise?
No, not because of the waterway impacts and things like that.
They said DNR was going to take it from the waterline down. I'm talking about from the waterline up.
We could, I mean, we could certainly look at a parking lot design, yes, but it would almost make more sense to do this all in, like I said, like Paul's saying, EMC is a pretty good expert in this. And this would be a good one to get the source out. If based on our team, the people I'm involved with here at the county, it would be better to, better served for that. But like I said, I could offer my survey team to do the survey and then I'll save $6,000 off this project.
But you can't do the engineering part of it?
I mean, we could, but we have, we need to look at priorities on our projects and figure out what would be the best interest of the county. It could be possibly, yes.
You know, I agree with Mr. Matters, that there aren't a lot of places over there to put anything in. And, you know, but it's something we've got to, we need to know what it's going to cost. I mean, it's just, thank you to the DNR for their part, but we still have an obligation for what we're going to have to pay. And if it's not in the budget, if it wasn't a budgeted item, that's my problem.
Well, and I really thought we were going to have, you know, more information today on scope of work and projected costs. So I hate that Commissioner Fendig couldn't be here. I'm sure he could probably maybe fill in some of those, but.
I just have a question on surveying. Don't we, the county has a survey that's elected or something?
We have a county surveyor. People, our street survey, people help with county surveyor.
And so what do they do?
Really, the county surveyor has never been tagged to do anything for the county really ever. But they could do it, but there's a fee associated with that. So we'd have to pay them their normal customary fee.
That's elected position?
It's elected, but it's not salary. So right now, that position has been paid nothing. There's no annual salary, there's no fees incurred until the county commission elects to use that person. But we could certainly use them, but there'd be a cost to it.
Anything else, Commissioners, before we move on?
All right. Thank you so much.
We appreciate you making time to come and speak with us today too.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is to receive a presentation from Brightnight, a renewable energy project. Mr. Metcalf and Ms. Pat.
And then can I change this slide so we should be able to access it? Wonderful. Hi all, and thanks for having us. We really appreciate the time.
And state your name for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Francesca Metcalf. I am the managing developer with Brightnight and over here is David Gill. Karen Price was supposed to be coming today, she wasn't able to join, so I brought David along instead.
All right, so I got the names all wrong. So glad you introduced yourself.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, so today we're here to just introduce ourselves, introduce Brightnight, and most importantly, introduce our project, the Pepperhennet Renewable Energy Project. It's a large-scale solar development that we are developing in the Wayne-Brantley-Glen County area. And so we'll start off just a high-level overview of Brightnight, we're a renewable power developer. We're also an independent power producer, which means that all of the projects that we develop, we aim to construct, own, operate, maintain throughout the life of those projects. So hopefully you will be seeing us in the area for a long time. We have a growing portfolio right now and we have a big focus on the Georgia market. So we've got about three gigawatts of projects that we are currently developing. We're a newer company, we're about four years old at this point. So we don't have any operating assets yet, but we are well-funded and we are planning on starting our first construction in Arizona later this year. So to give you just a high-level overview of what is solar, what can you expect? I know there are a couple of smaller scale solar projects around these areas, so hopefully you have seen a couple of those smaller projects and are more or less familiar with them. But how these projects work are, you know, we lease up a bunch of land when we're installing these panels. They're just metal beams basically posted directly into the ground, so no concrete needed. And then, you know, the solar panels go up top. They should last for about 40 years, that's the lifetime of these projects. And the great thing about them is there are no emissions, no odors, no sound outside of the project area, shouldn't have any impact to water quality. So they're very good neighbors. And, you know, this area specifically, we will have some drainage changes because this is a currently timberland area, but we are starting designs right now to be able to address that. You know, having storm longer basins, making sure that all of our designs basically don't impact any neighboring water quality or water drainage. So this project specifically, it's, the land that we're leasing is mostly in the Wayne and Brantley County areas. So it's in between Thomin and Hortens. It's a large-scale solar development, could be up to 1.4 gigawatts. So we've got about 9,000 acres of land under control. And we would have a long transmission line that goes through Glen County into the Thomin substation. We would be working with Georgia Power as well as a couple of potentially CNIs or like industries, Metas, Amazons, who would be buying the power from us while we actually own and operate this project.
So you said Georgia Power buys your product?
Yes, yep. That is the goal. We currently, we don't have an agreement with Georgia Power yet, that's something that we're working on right now and we hope to have official agreement with them by the end of the year. And so up here is a list, and I'm sorry, the formatting got a little mixed up in sending it over. But this is a list of some of the items that we're working through right now, or we will be working on in the future to make sure that the project that we give you is, you know, not going to have any negative impacts and, you know, is a well-developed project. So environmental concerns, I know are big around here, so we're putting a lot of scrutiny into that, you know, putting a lot of thought into how we're going to vegetate these projects. And then of course, how we are going to decommission the project as well. So after the 40-year lifetime, we're able to, we, Brightnight is responsible for decommissioning everything, taking everything off of the land, bringing the land back to its current state, more or less. We have a bond in place after about 12 years of operation that puts the money aside for that decommissioning, so we aren't leaving any problems after we leave. I think that comes with that. This next slide is kind of a fun one, the economic impact of this project. So even though most of the land that we're building on is in the Wayne and Brantley County areas, this project is a big job producer, especially during the construction period. And so Glen County will probably be our main source of labor. So you can expect to see, you know, an uptick of jobs in the county as well as, you know, people coming in, staying at hotels, eating at local restaurants. So you'll see a big kind of burst of economic input during the construction period, which we expect to happen between 2025 and 2026. And then of course, there are a couple of ongoing jobs as well for the closure of the life project. It's lower than those two years of construction, but it will be a steady influx of money and a couple of jobs.
But how much, how many permanent employment jobs?
Um, so we're thinking, it's usually around 10 people onsite at all times, doing maintenance and, you know, dealing with the vegetation. The total, it will be about 30 for this project. So it's not a huge job maker, but they are steady, consistent jobs.
Those full-time jobs or contracted?
Yes. Okay. And then, lastly, kind of why we're here is our community engagement. We take community engagement really seriously at Brightnight, which is why we're here so early in the process. You know, we, we want your feedback, we want your input, and we want to be able to get that input early on in the project, so we can make sure to put that input into our final designs. So listed in the, in the blue box are some items that we use to keep communities informed and engaged. So we, like a community webpage that should be online in the next three or four days that we're happy to share. We usually have newsletters that we'll send out quarterly to keep everyone up to date. We love coming to events like this to introduce ourselves. We'll probably be doing this a couple more times during the life of development, you know, hosting events, hosting open houses, and, you know, whatever else you need from us. And, you know, we have an open-door policy. Feel free to reach out to us whenever you need to. And my contact information, I don't know if you all are getting a copy of this, but my cell phone number is right there, so bother me on weekends.
If I might.
Yeah, just one thing.
So benefits from, you all set up the solar farm or whatever? And so how does the community benefit from you all? I mean, I understand it's renewable source of energy, but who benefits from that?
Well, we hope to make it a community-wide benefit. So one, the energy that we're producing is going into the local grid. So it will, and, you know, if you're a Georgia Power customer, you should see maybe not price decreases, but always, you know, the stable prices from this project. Tax income is large for these projects, at least regionally, since most of our land is in the Wayne and Brantley Counties. They will be seeing most of the tax income from the project. It's great for the landowners that we're working with. They get, you know, we're leasing land from them, so they are getting a stable income from us for the life of the project, for 40 years. Environmentally, a lot of times when, we're, we're very strategic about the land, that, how we vegetate the land. So we aim to get that land to a better condition than where we started it throughout the life of the project. So hopefully, if we decommission that land as, you know, prime farm land, ready to get back into agriculture, and hopefully have even better production than before. Another kind of roundabout benefit is that we are, we're saving this land, basically. We're preserving this land for the next 40 years. So, you know, if you want to keep the rural characteristics of your area.
So you're saying if you all don't purchase it, somehow we would lose the land?
No, no, no. Not that you would lose it, but saving it from other more permanent developments. So again, it's kind of a, not a direct.
Yeah, I guess this is not own somebody's house, helping them with their bill, I guess, you know? And, and I get it, it's a, it's a great renewable energy. I certainly support it as a renewable energy, but, and I know, I think we have another project out by the airport or somewhere. I'm, I'm just trying to understand who actually benefits from the energy that is captured and sold back to the grid.
Yeah, so Georgia Power.
I mean, it's, it's a good business model.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So Georgia Power customers should be the ones benefiting from us if we were.
So how do we know if the price is stable? Don't they have to go through the FCC or something to increase their rates? How would we know that this kind of thing impacts? And you may not know that today, but that's a good, it's a question I would like to.
That is, it's a great question. And so we, you know, when we get an agreement with Georgia Power, we basically, we have locked in prices for the next, it's usually like a 25, maybe a 20-year agreement. And so they can count on those prices staying the same. You don't have to worry about, you know, oil prices skyrocketing or anything like that with this project. The cost of the sun should theoretically always be the same. So.
Yeah, but again, I don't, I mean, their agreement with you, I understand about it would be locked in, but they still could charge whatever their rate is, I'm assuming. You all don't charge us the rate?
Yeah, yeah.
You sell your product to them.
To them, and any cost savings, they should be passing on to the grid.
Well, we, I don't know if that's going to be the case.
I have a question. Do you have a direct route to transfer your energy to their transmission lines?
Yes, so we would be connecting into the Thomin substation. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but yes, so we, we build the transmission line right from our facility to the substation and connect right into there. And then, from there, the electric, it's just go right into the grid.
So it wouldn't impact Thomin as much as far as their power cost? It's going to go wherever, it just goes Georgia Power, and then they distribute it wherever?
Yes.
Do y'all do anything with Okie, Finoke, rural, our EMC? Because that's on that western, northern part of Glen County is generally their power source.
Yeah, so we definitely work with a couple of EMCs. I doubt that their load is as large as our project, or that they would need as much power as we could supply them. But if, you know, if there is a demand from Okie-Finoke, we would definitely look into filling that.
What's the acreage on that?
We have about 9,000 acres under control. And so this project, it, we aren't necessarily going to use all 9,000 acres. It depends how much power we are able to sell to the Georgia Power or the EMCs and everything like that. So it could be a 200-megawatt project, in which case it would be closer to, you know, maybe 1,500 acres of land that we use up to, you know, the 1.4 gigawatts, in which case we would use all of that land.
Did you bring to us today an ask of any kind, or you're just giving us information?
Just giving you information at this point. Yeah, giving you guys a chance to ask questions like you have been. And, you know, we, we expect there to potentially be bumps in the road, and we hope that at some point you guys can be at least informed enough that, you know, you can help us maybe figure out those bumps. So yeah, at this point, just the same time.
Okay, well, that's very good. And Ms. Metcalf, we appreciate that. Any other comments, commissioners? All right, thank you so much for coming today.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have been working for some time on our, making some modifications and changes and additions to our code ordinances. And today, we're bringing, for discussion purposes, no vote today on a proposed amendment to the Glen County Code of Ordinance to add a chapter regarding camping and the improper use of public spaces, to add a chapter regarding pedestrian and vehicle safety, and to add a chapter regarding homelessness services. And this is something that, as I say, we've been working on for some time, and I've asked Mr. Monford to give us a brief overview of these three ordinances. Again, we're not voting on anything today. This is just for us to absorb, look at, digest over a period of time, and then we'll, we'll revisit this in a, in a near commission meeting. And I see Mr. Will Banks, so he's been working, supplying some information to us. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Chairman. Jason Willbanks, Assistant County Attorney. Our office, as the chairman said, has been working on three, it's become three ordinances on different topics. One is the camping ordinance, another is pedestrian and vehicle safety ordinance.
And Jason, if I can interrupt you?
Yes.
That's what, that's what you have in front of you, or drafts of these for you to take with you today and to look at. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. And then the third one's the homelessness services ordinance. Most of these should be familiar to all of you. The camping ordinance and the homelessness services ordinances are both very closely related or based upon what the city of Brunswick has done recently in the last six months. I've got the, I'll give you a brief overview, and then if you have any questions, and then, as the chairman said, you've got drafts there, too. And those are just drafts, you know, it's a baseline that we can work on going forward. The camping ordinance, again, is based on the 2022 City of Brunswick ordinance. There are certain prohibitions in the ordinance. Mainly, it's about camping in public places. There's also a portion about ingress and egress from areas like buildings, private property, or public areas. And then there's a portion about camping on private property without the owner's permission. So those would be the prohibitions. It talks about abandoned personal properties, so items that people use or try to store or abandon in public areas. And then the penalty section should also look familiar. It's based on our current noise ordinance and public conduct ordinance. It's the same kind of setup where there's a warning, and then there are fines or potential, potential imprisonment, you know, after a trial on a citation. So that is kind of the overview of the camping ordinance. And I'll just go through unless there are questions as we go through.
Jason, how do you, I mean, the penalty says if they're homeless, because that's who would be doing this camping, I'm assuming, how do you enforce that? Fine or, I mean, I can understand arresting them, but how do you cite them with a fine if they're homeless?
So there would be a citation for a violation, again, after a warning. The warning can be the first step. Hopefully, that would change.
Is verbally, or is there a ticket given or something?
Probably preferably a written warning. The ordinances we have now allows for a verbal or a written warning by the police. The police would be the ones who enforce the ordinance. And then a citation would go into effect, and the citation would be like any other violation of any other county ordinance. It would come before the court, and if there was evidence enough for the court to find somebody guilty, like anyone who would violate this, then the court would determine what the proper fine or other penalty should be. And the court has some leeway, and their magistrate court does, as far as what a penalty can be, and, you know, we, sometimes the court can, within the bounds of the law, get creative about what the proper penalty should be. And especially if there are concerns about someone's ability to pay a fine, the court will consider other options.
So the warning happens, then a citation?
Yes, sir.
Both of those are written?
Yes.
And what happens? Well, I'm assuming if we write it, we'll have a record of it?
That's right.
Even if we give it to the person? And they'll, you know, trash it or whatever?
Yes.
But, and then the next step would be removing them by arresting?
Arrest would be an option of the ordinance, as it is with some of the other ordinances that we have, like the noise ordinance or the public conduct ordinance. So it, it would be an option. And the way this ordinance is set up, it's similar to others, where each, each time you violate the ordinance, like if you violate it every day for a week, you could get seven citations for violating it each time. All right, any other questions on the camping ordinance? All right, the next one is the pedestrian vehicle safety ordinance. That's based on something that the city of Jacksonville recently put into place. This ordinance would prohibit various types of interaction or, I guess, approaches in private, public places. So occupying medians is one leg. Engaging in physical interaction between a pedestrian and a driver is a big portion of this, because a lot of this is about safety, and safe approaches by pedestrians in public roadways to people and vehicles. So that, that's a leg of this. Engaging in commercial activity is, that's defined in the ordinance. And I think that's, you know, that's aiming at doing this, doing that sort of thing in the public right-of-way. It's not, you know, just transferring or transporting something on right-of-way. It would be actually trying to sell wares, I think, or do other commercial activity in the right-of-way. And then approaching people, we have a private property component where the ordinance would prevent or prohibit people from approaching someone on private property for the purpose of distributing material without the permission of the owner. And then there's also, the, the final leg is about approaching people in certain areas where they might be more vulnerable. And so an example of that's ATMs. That, that's kind of a, this would set up kind of a buffer zone around that. There are exemptions, I've put up on the slide, for lending aid in an emergency situation. So if someone burped down on a right-of-way and someone else got out to help them, that would not be prohibited by this ordinance. That would be expressly exempt, as would most law enforcement activity in right-of-way. And there are other exemptions there, too. And then again, the penalty is based on our current noise ordinance, so very similar to the camping ordinance. And then the final component of this would be a permitting system to where the prohibited activity could be permitted through our current public conduct ordinance. So the current public conduct ordinance deals with public spaces like parks and that sort of thing. It's done through the police department. This, this is just adding something, basically, to our public conduct ordinance to allow the same process to happen for things that might go on the right-of-way, which is what it does.
If I could add to that, if, if the fire department wanted to have a fundraiser, and they could get a permit to be able to be in the right-of-way, and we've seen that in years past, or if a youth group wanted to have a car wash, they could get a permit to be in a certain intersection to do that. We're not trying to, to prohibit that kind of activity for permitted purposes.
So then, if, if somebody wanted to sell water during the summertime, then they could request this permit?
Yes, sir.
To, to do that?
Yes, sir. And they'd have to meet the current requirements that we've had, we have right now in public conduct ordinance. And I, we need to review those to make sure they all fit with this structure, but I think they would, it'd be similar to if somebody wants to have an event in a park or something, and they want a public conduct.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen, and I'm sure we all have in the larger cities, that now they're just kind of enterprising young people at serving intersections, that you're going to be stopped in traffic for a while in a larger city. And so they, they may have water to sell to people.
Yes, sir.
And part of this ordinance on private property, if, if someone from a shopping center that owns a shopping center wants to be able to stop the interactions in their, on their property, they can receive from Glen County a sign that says, no, this is prohibited. And then our police can come onto that property and stop that activity. The same with camping on private property. We will make signs available that they can post that property as a no trespassing, camping prohibited kind of, kind of thing, so that it gives the police the authority to go onto that property. If, if the homeowner, landowner doesn't want that, then he's not obligated to do it. But if he should, in some of our more heavily camped areas, they could stop it from happening on their property, and this would give teeth to it so that it can be enforced.
Okay. All right. The last one is the newest one, and it's the homelessness services ordinance. This is pretty much the ordinance that the city of Brunswick just passed, I think, a week or two ago, or maybe a few weeks ago, but with the county language in it to make it the county's. And so this may be, it's probably, it's a very multiple draft. You know, I'd ask you to look through this and see what you think of these things, because again, this is more, not extending, but having the county equivalent of what the city's just done regarding homeless shelters, homeless day shelters, and homelessness services providers. And so those terms are defined in the ordinance. It basically sets up a system that would require a conditional use permit for certain places like the ones listed, to be able to open and to operate in the county. It would also require homeless shelters and homeless day shelters to obtain an occupation tax license, and then sets applications only standards for providers of those services. So it uses our current structure to do some of the same things that the city's doing with these sorts of places. Any questions on this one?
Mr. Chairman, I got, I got a couple of questions, Jason. I appreciate it. I'll just be, there is anything in here, and I know everybody's seen it, there's R.D. that stays on the causeway. He moves around. Is there anything in here that speaks to that, where somebody is just randomly staying two weeks, but they're two weeks, but they're moving? You know, is there anything that, in here that speaks to that that we can, you know, they gotta move. They gotta go, they gotta get out of Glen County. Is there anything in here or?
Yes, Commissioner. I believe the camping ordinance would apply to that. Camping is using a public area for living accommodation purposes. And so if somebody on the right, the public right of way, like the county right of way who's living there in an RV, I think this would capture that.
So if we pass this, this guy that's on the causeway constantly moving, the sheriff's office or Glen County PD can go tell him, he's got to move. Instead of like it is now, we just tolerate it?
I believe that's right.
Okay. The other thing is Sam's this weekend and at Target. You mentioned the owners of the property, Target, you got Target, you got Olive Garden, you got these people out here playing banjos, guitar, blowing horns, whatever. Does the police have the authority, and they're just panhandling, in this ordinance, do we handle that and in order to make them move on?
So it, I think it would depend on where, the type of property. So Target as an example, which I think, I believe Target is actually in the city limits, which is kind of strange. But that type of place, that would be private property.
Yeah, let's take Sam's. I saw a family of five, a little kid, four years old, running up to a car at Sam's there by the thing. That doesn't need to be tolerated here. That's a safety hazard. And the parents were to be locked up for having a child run up to a car to grab a couple of bucks. In this ordinance, will we tell that person, you know, you gotta move or you could go to jail? I mean, it's getting crazy out here and we gotta stop it. And that's just what I'm, I think, Chairman, we've talked about it. We just want to see this stuff stopped or moved to a different community. I mean, I'll be honest with you, that's how I'm shooting straight forward. So does that meet that, you know, if that would stop this?
What we've talked about, if, just to continue to use Sam's, if they don't ask us to, if they don't post a sign saying it's not allowed on that property?
Yeah.
Then there's not much we can do. Is that not correct?
Yes.
But if they post that, if they request that assistance, they can post a sign that says that's not allowed, and then that gives the police permission to go on. Am I keeping it straight here?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and that would be under the pedestrian ordinance, would capture that sort of activity on public property, or on private property if the sign.
So let's just say at Sam's, where you got different merchants there, as long as one of them says it or they can post it, or does it have to be a group effort?
And I don't know how their, that ownership structure out there, if the owner of that development?
Wants it.
Yeah. The, if an individual merchant, you know, I'd still have to be defined as to who owns the property.
Yeah. Exactly. And then one other thing, we had one on Pickers Street and the property owners, you know, they had a camp, a couple of tents out there, and the property owners went out there and cleared the property and took care of everything. And so this gives them a little bit more teeth, if that's my understanding, the property owners, to get those people just littering their property off their property.
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's one more tool, I think, for the property owners and for law enforcement to use.
Okay, good. I saw it.
Any other questions? This, again, you know, take this home, digest it, we'll, we'll bring it back up in, in a couple of weeks. Is that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Item number four, the SPOSS 2022 Road and Traffic Improvement Section, the extension of McKenzie to Highway 341 project, determine there's no conflict of interest with SHU Survey providing professional service for the project and accept the scope of service from SHU Surveying Company for the survey work on the project. And we have Mr. Andrews and Mr. -- hey, Jason, how are you? Standing here. We deferred this from the May 4th Board of Commissioners meeting.
And before y'all speak, let me just say that I want to apologize to the commission for taking the time to bring this to work session. It wasn't the scope of the project that I was trying to, that I was having a problem with. That's not the case at all. In fact, I'm in favor of the McKenzie Road project. My problem was with the conflict of interest, but that has been addressed and has been straightened out, which we'll address on Thursday, Thursday's meeting if I'm not mistaken. So that was the reason for that, and I, and I don't want to delay, to take up the time of the commission for that reason.
Well, but I do think it would be good if we talk about that conflict today so that when we get to Thursday's meeting?
Exactly.
We'll, we'll have our information. So, Mr. Monford, guys, is there anything that y'all need to add to this other than you were going to talk about the scope of work?
Just answer your questions, sir.
All right. Stand by.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Andrews, I am handing out a explanation of changes, version of the ordinance amendment that's on your agenda for Thursday night. And where this ties into what you're looking at today is that, as y'all have seen, a few, you know, probably three or four conflict of interest waivers, acknowledgements on your agendas over the last probably two to three months. And the reason for that is that your current ethics ordinance includes appointed officials in your ethics ordinance. And that's, you know, and that's by design, where potentially there's an issue or at least a challenge that, you know, all your, or a lot of your appointed officials also have professional jobs of which dovetail into a lot of things that engineering, real estate. And sometimes from time to time, architecture, those things come in the form of proposals or bids on county projects. So for instance, what you have before you right now is a surveying waiver for a county project to make sure the board is aware of it and understands and is okay with that. So that's the general background on what your current ethics ordinance in terms of transactions, business, contracts, real estate, et cetera, disclosure of things, no coercion of, or trying to persuade the fellow board members. What this amendment would do, and so when your red line shows what is being added, anything that's stricken through shows things are being deleted from a proposed amendment on Thursday. So what this would do essentially is it would exempt your appointed officials from that portion of the ethics ordinance, or at least the portion that says they cannot engage in any business or transaction or have any contract with the county without it first being waived by the, by the board commissioner. So this would exempt those appointed officials, appointed individuals, unless of course it dealt with something that was going to come before their actual board, you know, project, an item, subject matter that's going to be before them. And then they're also doing the work that's going to their respective advisory board, planning commission, et cetera. So this would eliminate those, those potential waivers that you have to look at each time based on that you're okay, you're okay, and you're satisfied that that is not a conflict of interest and you're making that determination in that, in making that decision. So that is before you on Thursday for a decision, for a vote. But that's, that's the summary of what this, this amendment would do. Are any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Now, what did you just say?
In some way, just the materiality of the transaction involved comes in to play on that decision as a factor?
Uh, there's no dollar amount materiality in certain, in the sense of, as drafted, there's no, you know, $10,000, $20,000 threshold, $100,000 threshold. It's just if they're an appointed official, it would not, it would not trigger the, basically wouldn't say this is a conflict and has to go to the board to waive it. Unless it's actually something that goes to their, to their, to their board. That would ordinarily go to their advisory board or planning commission for a vote. Of course, that would, that would be something that they would not be able to be exempted from. But there's no materiality, no threshold. We can do something, we could certainly do that, but as presented, there's no, there's no benchmark threshold to say above this amount's not okay, below it is okay.
Well, the purpose of this is, you know, we, we have had this come up a couple of times this year where we've got appointed planning commission members that, that have agreed to serve on the planning commissions, but they have for a long time done work for Glen County as, as a bidding operation or their companies have. And, and this is to, to exempt them unless, you know, of course, if there becomes a particular case that might withdraw them out. One of the exceptions to this that, that we had talked about, say they're a member of the Armahaw Park Board, and one of those members wanted to put in improvements out there and wanted to do the work themselves, that would then become a conflict of interest. But for them to vote on, on policies and that kind of thing, it, it wouldn't, there would be no financial benefit to them. So we're trying to fix this so that every time it turns around, we're not having to vote one of these, which in my opinion casts aspersions on, on the person that we're talking about as if there, there is a conflict and we're going to say that conflict's okay. That's, that's not the purpose of this. And, and we need good people with knowledge of the matters that they're considering to be able to sit on these boards so that we can make informed decisions and their recommendations when they come to us be, be valuable in those considerations. I hope I'm saying that correctly. Any, any comment on this? This is, this will come up Thursday night for, for the vote, but thought it good since we were considering item number four, it was a good place, I think, to talk about this. So, anything else, commissioners? All right, thank you. Item number five is to authorize procurement to issue a request for qualifications to establish a pool of engineering and design firms to be used for capital and SPOSS projects. And Mr. Calvert is here. This is another item that was deferred from the May 4th meeting.
Good afternoon, commissioners. President Calvert, procurement officer. As the chairman stated, this is the item before you is to authorize procurement to issue a request for qualifications. This was deferred and some additional information was requested referenced to this item. So I've been asked, I produced some information yesterday. I was asked to read that aloud today to kind of give some additional explanation and then I'm available for any questions. So county staff are asking for authorization to issue a request for qualifications to establish a cadre of qualified engineering firms to be utilized for some capital SPOSS projects. This group of engineering firms will be utilized for services such as surveying services, stormwater drainage improvement studies and design, landscape, architecture, bicycle, pedestrian sidewalk planning and design, transportation and traffic engineering, right-of-way acquisition services, and environmental regulatory permitting, and some other associated professional services. These services are design related, not construction related. In essence, this pool would be used for some of our simpler projects that cannot be handled in-house, such as sidewalk and drainage projects. Major projects such as the design of the new fire station, new EOC would follow the traditional IFV, RFP process in place. The RFP process consists of publishing an RFP that includes the scope of services that we want firms to be able to perform. Firms will submit a proposal that contains areas we request, such as an outline of the firm's experience, staff qualifications, references, previous projects, et cetera. Relevant information that will allow staff to make a determination that the firms are qualified and proficient in the scope of services that they would require, be required to perform. Once this process is complete, Glen County would now have a pool of firms that have been vetted and deemed qualified that we utilize over the next 12 months. Departments can then solicit quotes from this pool of firms for various scopes of work. Once quotes are received, staff can move forward based on what quotes, based on what quotes are most advantageous to the county based on the price and timeline. Staff are asking for a $100,000 threshold to be approved for services falling under this request for qualifications, meaning staff is authorized to utilize these firms under the RFP as long as the fees are less than $100,000. Any scope of work that is or anticipated to be more than $100,000 will be required to follow the current procurement order, which is obtaining three quotes under $50,000 or if it's above $50,000, it would either be published as an IFV, RFP, or approved by five commissioners for an exception. The purpose of this RFP is to prove efficiency and allow staff to issue design work for projects needing to be started. With this RFP, the process is cut from 60 to 90 days to a two-week turnaround while still obtaining competitive pricing due to numerous firms being able to quote for services. So that's kind of an outline, some additional information. I'm available for any questions as you have.
Commissioner Tosterson, you had asked for this to be pulled, does that?
And I asked him to read this out so it would be on the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is anyone limited that they can't be added to this?
So that was the additional question. Traditionally, you would issue the RFP and then use, use that, the result for a period of time, which, which I suggested is 12 months. And then you could renew the, the RFP after that 12 months, replenish that pool. So we would want as, as much participation, the bigger the pool we have, the better competitive pricing we'll obtain when we solicit quotes.
That's what I'm hoping for, a big pool.
Yes, sir. And what this does is this puts all the footwork on the front end. We're not having to evaluate a firm, we're not having to look through their references, their qualification. We did all that in the very beginning. Now we just want your price and we'll go with the lowest price, taking into consideration some, some time constraints.
Thank you for the work on that, Reston.
So the public understands this would be a group of folks, they still would have to bid on the project?
Yes, sir.
Will be awarded to just one person, where you award this one to this one and then the next one to somebody else?
No, sir. So let's say we have 10 firms. We would send out public, let's use Public Works for example, they would send out a scope of work, give two weeks for these firms, give us what your timeline is, what your price is, and we'll go with what's the best for the county. So it would not be a rotation, it would be they would all can provide competitive pricing every time.
So would it still be subject to the grading process?
No.
Within that pool?
No, sir. They would all, in the very beginning, they would all be vetted as being qualified. If they were not vetted as qualified, they would not be in the pool.
Okay.
So it should speed up things as well.
That's what the goal is. But what I'd understood, say, say we don't get 10, say we get four. Is it, give me the pros and cons of if the fifth firm wanted to come in and get qualified and get vetted, could they not be added to that pool during the year? Or is that, what is the negative of allowing additional firms to buy in or vet themselves in for approval during, during the year?
So you're asking for negative, I'm not going to be a proponent to be a one, but the negative would be stopping, doing the evaluation, going through their qualifications, going through their references, things like that, which is what we tried to accomplish in the very beginning. That way we didn't need to do that later on down the road. That could be done.
Yeah. It's just, I guess it depends on, on the, the response that we get to the number of firms that want to be a part of this.
Yes, sir.
And you're anticipating a good number of firms will want to be?
The more, the more number, the more competitive our prices are that we get. And the other thing to keep in mind is this is not going to be for all our projects. It's going to be for some of our simpler stuff and we'll put out RFPs for our more side topics.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yeah, and keep in mind, just in looking at some of the business process improvements that we wanted to put in place, obviously the efficiency plan. To answer your question, just the normal RFP now takes 60 to 90 days. So for that company that comes in midstream, all right, we're going to do it every year, we're going to offer it up again. So they would have to wait a little while, preferably, to join that. But every year we would ask for additional firms to, to sign up. It's just going to streamline things and make things a lot, lot quicker than the city does, if there's other counties and cities across the state that do something similar.
Okay. Any other questions, commissioners?
Thank you, Reston.
Thank you, Reston. We'll, we'll appreciate that, I think. All right. So here we come. Item number seven is a discussion for the fiscal year '24. And Ms. Monson?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Sometime last week, I believe it was probably late Tuesday night or early Wednesday morning, I sent you an email with a link to our FY24 proposed budget. I hope that you all were able to review the proposed budget and didn't have any, any issues navigating this process. I'm happy with the way that this turned out. Normally, we produce a PDF and give you papers, but we're trying to be more efficient and move things to electronic means. So I know you have heard me discuss the company Open Gov, and we've brought, brought forward the, the request to purchase their software, and they are the, the portal that have allowed us to, to publish this book online. So we're going to be moving in that direction for a lot more of our, of our books and items to save money on printing and binding and all of those things. So that was the first, the first thing I wanted to say. So I, I'm not going to go over the budget in detail today. I'm available to answer any questions that you have. I thought we would just kind of walk through quickly the overview of the proposed budget, which is under the, the tab that I sent you and is also on our website for everyone to see. On the homepage, there's a FY24 proposed budget link and the On the homepage, there's a FY '24 proposed budget link, and this is all available for all to review. So, there's a summary there, and that's what is up on the screen here. So, the first section is a breakdown of our budget and the fund types. So, our general fund in FY '24 proposed budget makes up 36%. Special revenue funds, there's a whole slew of them, but they make up 44% of our budget, capital projects, 12, and so forth. So, that's just a breakdown of the budget itself. As we've talked about before, the county has 28 different funds, which is essentially 28 different sets of books that have to stay in balance. And so, all of those different funds are within this budget here, this circle. You can scroll on down to the next section. All right, here I have a breakdown of the millage rates. I did look at the proposed tax digest from the Property Tax Assessor's Office and was asked to look and try to balance the budget with a rollback budget for the millage rate to the proposed rollback rate. We don't have the final digest yet, but I did a preliminary calculation, and the preliminary calculation would roll the general fund millage rate back to 3.798 mills. I know that that has been a focus of many on this commission over the last few years. So, I did include that in the creation of this budget. We are currently at 4.119, so that kind of shows you the decrease there in the proposed. So, the proposed FY '24 budget is created using the 3.798 mill possible rollback. Again, that would not be finalized until we get the final digest. You can scroll down.
Can I ask you a question on that chart?
Yes, go back up for a minute.
I was just looking at the millage rate, it says for District 6, Jekyll, 3.798, and that's exactly what is stated?
Yes.
For all tax districts in the county?
Right. So, everyone pays the M&amp;O rate, which is the same thing as the general fund rate. Jekyll Island, they don't have, they don't use any of our other services, so they only pay for the general fund services. The EMS, police, fire, sea island police, and capital projects, they don't take advantage of any of those items, so they don't pay for those millage rates.
As you can see, the M&amp;O is the same for all six districts.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong call.
So, that just, you know, shows you what the county millage rate is. This does not include the school board, or the city has a separate rate as well for District 1. So, this is just county millage.
The District 2 doesn't have a fire?
That's correct. So, District 2, our fire stations are so far away from the homes out there, it takes them, I believe, is the fire tube here, what's the timeframe, 20-ish minutes to get there?
About 18 minutes, I think, in the county line.
18 minutes. And so, many years ago, the board at the time determined that they should not have to pay the fire fund millage. We do respond to fires out there. However, the board felt that by the time they got there, it wouldn't be a whole lot of help to be there. So, at that time, the fire fund millage rate was not applied to District 2.
Yeah, I know we've been talking about how to do something about reducing the time for the service folk out there. And I don't know if that's Commissioner Tosterson, Chairman's district, kind of combined, and the rural part out that way.
See, no one's getting more fire stations.
Can we get Monica to get a grant for a building at least out there?
Something to shoot for, for sure.
We can definitely have her look for one.
Yeah. Yeah, my wife is from out that way, so you got to do something.
Well, it is a lot of ground to cover, but we have to take a look and see where an ideal location would be if we were going down that path to look for where a fire station could actually service all the different areas.
It'd probably take more than one.
So many IM subdivisions out there now, I would think something is warranted.
That's critical, one installment, that's the one that's just nowhere.
Yeah.
All right, so if you want to scroll on down to the revenue section, this is a breakdown of our revenues. So, in the FY '24 budget, 59% of our revenue comes from taxes, and that's all different types of taxes. You can see the different types over to the right there. Property taxes are 53%, sales tax is 28%, accommodation excise tax is 11%, and so forth. So, that breakdown of tax types makes up the 59% over on the left. And then the other items there are labeled. So, the intergovernmental, the 13%, that is mostly the grants that Monica has obtained for us over the last year or two. We have a much larger budget this year than normal, and the vast majority of that is being funded through several grants that she has obtained and is currently working on several more. So, she brings in many, many millions of dollars into the county's budget and very appreciative of her efforts. Any questions on this section before we go on down?
The other sources example of that?
Yeah. So, other sources are primarily transfers in between funds, use of fund balance. So, we're using fund balance in the capital projects fund this year to fund several large projects. And so, when we use fund balance, we label that as a other source, because it's not actually a revenue coming in, we're using our own savings to fund that. Okay, you can scroll down. All right, next is a breakdown of our expenditures and where those costs are. So, 34% of our budget is public safety, 21% general government, 21% public works, 7% judiciary, 9% culture and rec, housing and development, 6%, 1% debt service, and 1% health and welfare.
How is the rise in interest rates, how is that impacting our...
Our debt service is all set at fixed rates, so we're not being affected right now. We are earning quite a bit more interest than we had budgeted on our cash, so that has helped us with our revenue coming in, but the money going out, our interest rates are all fixed.
Who do we bank with?
We bank primarily with AmerisBank, and we have some accounts with South Coast, we have some investment accounts, and we also have some accounts at, sorry, the name...
That's okay, I was just curious.
...account share. What bank do you bank with?
South Coast, Delaware.
South Coast, okay. So, South Coast and Ameris are the primary ones. All right, scrolling on down, this is a breakdown of the general fund. So, if you look at our general fund budget, the total budget is $91.9 million. However, if you remove all of the inter-fund duplications, and what that means is because we have 28 different sets of books, when we move money from one set of books to another, it shows us an expense on this one that's coming out of, and it shows us a revenue coming into the one it's going into. So, it doubles everything, because then you have expenses in both places and revenues in both places when you're moving money around. So, that's a kind of a challenging concept to understand, but when you take all of those inter-fund duplications out, our actual general fund budget is $67.4 million for FY '24. And then there's a breakdown there of the funding of those different areas. All right, you can scroll to the next section. This is a breakdown of our expenditure totals. 42% of our budget is made up of personnel costs for this year. It's typically more than this, but we have such a large capital budget this year that it's kind of thrown the numbers off. But 42% personnel, 32% county operations, and 26% capital this year. All right, you can keep going. All right, and then I'm not going to go through all of this, but this is a list of all of the different funds that are included in the budget. What is not included in the budget is the SPOST funds. The SPOST funds have their own budget that's set at the beginning of the SPOST issuance, so we don't budget those annually, but they are still part of our spending plan, and they are included on our capital, our five-year capital plan, which we'll go to next. So, if you can scroll down all the way to the bottom and click the third one, the proposed five-year capital plan. So, this is something that I'm very excited to present to you all this year. This is our first year that we've ever had a multi-year capital plan. I will say that it is definitely not built out, and it's a very beginning stages of working this, but we plan in, over this next fiscal '24, to be doing quite a bit more planning and long-term capital planning to get this plan more robust over the years. However, it is exciting to finally have completed our first five-year plan. So, if you can scroll down to the first chart, this is what is in our current plan now, primarily what is made up of these totals. There's a breakdown by funding source on the left, so those are all the different funds that we have. And you can see, if you look for FY '24, which is the year we're talking about now, our capital projects fund is almost $21 million, and then grant funding at $14 million. So, that makes up the vast majority. Also, we have the ARPA fund at $8 million. So, you know, those are some very large numbers that we typically don't have. But if you look at future years, '25, '26, '27, '28, those are typically more in line with our capital spending. Again, this does not include SPOST, so SPOST is down at the very bottom, and we can take a look at that shortly. But the way that this plan was developed was we reached out to staff and commissioners to request items that you would like to see funded in capital. Again, we're going to do a much deeper dive next year, but this was our preliminary first try to get this up and running. So, if you scroll down...
I have a question. So, in the accommodation excise tax fund, is the Coast Guard Beach project impacts the FY '24?
24.
That's a big impact.
So, 3 million of the four is the county's proposed portion of that project. The other 4 million, which is the CVB's 3, plus the million-dollar grant from the state, is down under the grant funding line.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And then on the ARPA fund, the vast majority of that 8 million is drainage projects throughout the county. We have some big drainage projects that are going on. So, you can scroll down to the graph. This is a graph, and if you could just hover your mouse over the bar, like the blue bar there in the first, if you, you can see the graphs are interactive, so you can hover over each section, and it tells you the breakdown of percentage and the amount of the budget and where that comes from. So, this is just a different way to look at the chart above. Right? Keep going. All right, so here, we have, I have all five years listed here, detailed lists of projects and assets that are included. So, the FY '24 will be the budget that you'll be voting on at the end of June. And the list of everything that's in here, you can see that we had to have some big items on there, such as the Juvenile Services Center, the Frederica Sea Island Intersection Improvements, and so forth. But if you scroll on down, if you go within the box and scroll to the bottom of that FY '24, yeah, just keep going. Keep going. And then there's a little bar at the bottom, okay, so you can see there the $49 million, that's the total. So, that makes up the total of everything in the budget, if you're wondering what specific capital items are included in this year's budget. And then if you scroll on down, we're not going to look through all of these, but there's the next four years listings that tie out to the number at the top. So, you can scroll, keep going past these listings, please. And then down here at the bottom is a breakdown of the SPOST projects in graph and tabular form for Tier 1 first, and then Tier 2 is the second section there at the bottom. So, again, just another way to look at a breakdown of our SPOST projects and amounts. So, if you scroll on down to the very bottom and click the second, the, let's see, hold on, the third one, the proposed budget, budget for approval. All right, and then this is the actual budget that will be coming before you to vote on, so it's broken down with your revenues and expenditures in the general fund by department. And this is the same type of layout that you're used to seeing in a normal budget, it's just online instead of in paper form. And then if you keep scrolling down, all of the other different funds that are budgeted are here, listed out for you. You can keep going. And then here is a breakdown of our FTEs, or this is our personnel budget. So, all of that data is available for you with some notes and details below. So, if you have any questions or on specific items, I'm available for you and happy to answer anything that you have today. Just a note, we will have a public hearing on the budget at the first meeting in June. I believe that's June 1st is the, I believe, the date?
It is.
June 1st at the regular board meeting. And then the adoption of the budget at the second meeting in June, and I believe that's proposed to be June 22nd.
That's right here.
All right, any questions on the budget?
Everybody's got it memorized, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you too much.
I know this has probably been three or four days of hard work to get it. Yeah. Now, we do truly recognize how much time and effort you and your staff have put together in bringing us this. Very much appreciate it. Anything else on our budget?
Yeah, I probably, because it was something I may have asked you.
Okay.
All right. So, generally, we do have executive session slated today for potential litigation...
Pending litigation.
Pending litigation and personnel.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn the executive session for pending litigation and personnel.
Say it. Have a motion by Commissioner Rofoski, a second by Commissioner Swett. All in favor, raise your right hand. That is unanimous, we are resist.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wofoski, a second by Commissioner Booker to come out of the executive session. All in favor? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to settle Lewis Rett's pending workers' compensation claim in the amount of $25,000.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Wofoski and a second by Commissioner Booker to settle the workers' comp claim. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board of commissioners named Scott Edner as the sole finalist for the position of Glen County Police Chief.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Swett.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something about this process and I would appreciate our commissioners, our county managers, it's been a long process and a good process. Scott is, if what happens today will step in and I can appreciate that, but I can't support that position. I have been very vocal about the sheriff and I have been that for quite a while and believe the sheriff would be an option. But I just wanted to take a chance, take an opportunity and just, you know, thank the sheriff for what he does for our community, how he supports us and will continue to support us and I hope that someday that we will get to a point where we will be like 153 other counties in the state of Georgia, where we have a sheriff that is our top law enforcement. With that said, I appreciate my commissioners, appreciate our county manager and our county attorney and that's all I need to say about today.
I have a motion by Commissioner Swett, a second by Commissioner Booker. Other discussion? All right, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is for, for those opposed, two against, so the motion carries. Any other business to come before the commission today?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Wofoski, a second by Commissioner Booker to adjourn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That's unanimous. We stand adjourned.